Do we have the camera feed?
Our screens aren't even on, actually.
Uh huh, our screens aren't. There we go.
Now they're firing up. Get ready. Okay, there we go. Good morning, welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, October 29th. I'm County Board Chair Sean Flowerday. With me is Vice Chair Rick Vest and Commissioners Matt Schuldy, Rome Amundson, and Kristi Yocum. Please rise and join me for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located to the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes, the Board of Commissioners meeting held in October 22nd, 2024?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two's claims, two A, approval of the claims processed through October 25th, 2024?
Move approval of the claims, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two B, approval of the claims including billings for goods and services beyond the ninety day time period provided in Nebraska v. statute 23-135 for Cornhusker International Trucks Incorporated dated October 28th, 2024 for a total of thirty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I'll move approval.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three is the consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a Commissioner, by any member of the public without prior notice, unless there is an exception. These items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts, C-19-0844 with Karasoft for cloud services of LinkedIn Learning, C-22-0861 with StairCycle Incorporated for annual medical waste pickup and disposal services, C-23-0241 with MMC Contractors for unit price plumbing services, B, a right-of-way contract with Bradsony Oldemeyer, South 12th Street and Pella Road in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, C, a grant contract with Burnalow Educational Services, excuse me, Educational Solutions Team for the best alternative school program in the amount of ten thousand dollars, D, a subaward contract with Saint Monica's Behavioral Health Services for Lancaster County Community Corrections Pretrial Release Program in the amount of forty-four thousand two hundred and seven dollars, and E, receive and place and file the county treasurer's report of the 2023 distress warrants as of October 23rd, 2024.
I'll move approval of the consent items, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item four, new business, four A, resolution in the matter of authorizing the county clerk to issue payments while the county board is adjourned.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Maybe just point of interest for people that this, because we're not meeting next week.
Right, correct.
Yeah. On election day.
On election day, okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For B, resolution in the matter of striking uncollectible property tax from the tax list.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For C, a resolution in the matter of signing the county annual certification of program compliance 2024 for the Nebraska Board of Public Roads, classifications, and standards.
Pam Damien, Lancaster County engineer. This is the annual certification of our program that always follows the one and six.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For D, a right-of-entry maintenance agreement with the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission to remove and reinstall drainage structure in the Olive Creek Lake State Recreation Area. There is no cost to the county.
Pam Damien, Lancaster County engineer. When we do work and it ends up impacting Nebraska Game and Parks ground, they do not like to issue us an easement or sell us right away. So we do these maintenance agreements with them in order to maintain the facilities that are adjacent to their properties.
I'll move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For E, a contract with Midwest Infrastructure Incorporated to provide culvert maintenance, phase four. The cost to the county is not to exceed five hundred and eleven thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-five cents.
Pam Damien, Lancaster County engineer, the exhibit that I have placed up on the screen momentarily, I guess, there we go. Just need to pause, right? Shows the area that we are replacing pipes in for this, for this particular contract. This contract did come in under bid, under engineer's estimate.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For F, compensatory time off agreements with the following for Donald Bosak and Tyler Eberspakter?
Pam Damien, Lancaster County engineer. These two individuals were recently promoted from tech one to tech two. Tech two is a unclassified position, but it is an hourly position. So our current comp time agreements that are set up with, as policy, do not cover the unclassified staff, and so these are agreements with those individuals to allow them to have comp time.
Unclassified, were they previously classified?
They were previously covered by a bargaining agreement.
Right, okay, got it. How many unclassified hourlies? That's just such a weird... Okay, fine.
We, it's, yeah, no, we have that class in our office, and this is just, you know, an attempt to make it a little more equitable, and it does help out with, especially like if we're doing asphalt and we're going till, you know, dark, starting at daybreak and going till dark. It gives the staff an opportunity to spend a little more time with their family.
I move approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For G, a request for an exceptional circumstance award under personnel rule seventeen point nine B for Alicia Rosno, Community Corrections Mental Health Specialist, for a four-step pay increase.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jeff Kilpatrick with the Community Corrections. I'd submitted this request for exceptional circumstance award for Alicia based on her performance, also based on the fact that the job description that she is currently in was written in nineteen ninety-five, and what she's doing now far exceeds that. She's doing a job very similar that's a much higher pay grade to what our reentry folks are doing at the jail. She has done a tremendous job, and I would certainly hate to lose her based on the fact that we can't compete. I've actually already submitted to Human Resources a request that this position be looked at and upgraded.
Actually, last week you mentioned the fact that many of those job descriptions had not been updated since nineteen ninety-five. So many things, that's, my goodness, that's a long time.
A lot of changes in the program.
One I was looking at yesterday talked about the use of a typewriter, and we've, I said maybe we need to go find one, so...
I don't think you, can you find him anymore? Anyway, I think that was certainly is, we do need to keep our good people, and so, yes, I would certainly move approval of that.
Second.
I'm just curious, so has this position, the job description hasn't been updated yet?
Has not been updated yet.
But that's, the process of that is going through HR?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Very good. Do we have a motion? And a second. A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Let's call the roll.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Brings us to four H, an agreement with Walden University LLC for student internship experiences in Lancaster County Department of Corrections. There is no cost to the county.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For I, an agreement with Roderick J. Jordan for the provision of critical thinking, drug and alcohol, and anger management class instruction to participants in the Lancaster County pretrial diversion programs. The cost to the county shall not exceed three hundred dollars per week.
I move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For J, agreement with Soval Solutions LLC to perform professional counseling services and evaluate the Lancaster County Adult Drug Court Program. The cost to the county is thirty-six thousand per year, and grant funds received from the Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration will be utilized to pay this amount.
Commissioners, Jeff Kilpatrick, Community Corrections. This is a contract to do a deep dive evaluation of the participants in our current drug court program and to see if there's, where areas that we can improve our overall programming. It'll be looking at a lot of the heat results specifically that I spoke about last week.
I move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
For K, a mini grant contract application with the Nebraska Department of Transportation in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred dollars for county sheriff to participate in the nationwide Make It Click mobilization to increase awareness and usage of seat belts and child restraint systems.
I move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For L, a contract with MTZ Construction LLC for construction of the DMV Election Commissioner parking lot. The cost to the county is not to exceed eighty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Good morning, Commissioners, Karen Peterson, Director of Facilities and Property. This is an approved capital expenditure under Fund 51 this year. We are taking the parking area in between the Department of Motor Vehicles and the Election Commission, doing it in three sections. So this is this year's first section, and we're staying away from the Election Commission building. We're starting on the other side this year, so.
For a week or so now. This is so very much needed. I move approval. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
For M, a contract with Midwest Alarm Services to provide the annual service of fire and security alarm monitoring. Cost to the county is not to exceed four thousand five hundred dollars.
Move approval.
Yeah, second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For N, a contract with Eleanor Creative LLC for professional design and branding services associated with the Square One Family Center remodel project. The county will utilize American Rescue Plan Act ARBIT funds in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars.
I move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schuldy?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item five, public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak in items-related county business not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to one appearance of up to five minutes, and that time may not be reserved, transferred, or otherwise assigned to other speakers. These time limits may be extended or reasonably decreased at the discretion of the chair.
Robert Borom. I talked to a professional football player, excuse me, coach, the other day. I asked him how he knows that any given, that a given game ends up with the right score. He said, "Oh, well, we have lots of watchers. We have seven watchers called refs on the field who carefully watch each play from a different angle." Then we have cameras on the ground and in the air that watch everything. They watch the players, the plays, and the refs. If a play or a call by a ref looks questionable, we rewind the cameras and watch it again and again and again if it requires, several times from different, several different angles. Of course, we also have all of our fans closely watching every play. They get pretty irate if the right call isn't made and someone gets away with cheating. Or someone gets away with cheating. Millions, perhaps billions of dollars hinge on the score at the end of the game. It's very important that we get every play correct so we arrive at the right score in the end. The score has to be right. A score that is not right is not fair. It has to reflect the true winner. The whole point of the game is to honestly choose winners and losers. Great effort must be made to accomplish that. It all depends upon watchfulness. Transparency and watchfulness. Transparency and watchfulness give us verifiability and peaceful, happy fans. And with that, my conversation with the coach pleasantly ended. That's the importance we place upon watchfulness in a football game. A football game, a game. How much more important is watchfulness in our all-important elections? We're not only millions and bil-, excuse me, we're not only billions and trillions of dollars hanging in the balance, but lives as well. The answer is obvious to anyone with a brain. The importance is astronomically greater. Yet, we let people vote we can't see, and we let machines count our votes with software and hardware that we can't see. And you, you think it's okay because you are naive enough to think that everyone is honest. The only other option is that you are in on the cheat. You're either naive or in on the cheat. Let the record show that when our county and our country needed leaders in the realm of public-facing election transparency, verifiability, security, and integrity that you chose to sit on your hands and be followers of the corrupt status quo, along with other alleged election, elected officials in this county, of course. When things get messy, we know who to hold accountable. We're already seeing disruptions in this so-called election. There are reports of ballot drop boxes being destroyed, and of course, the ballots with them. Ballot drop boxes are a cheater's wet dream. There's no watchfulness or security to them or to the ballots they contain whatsoever. Of course, the machines are a cheater's wet dream as well. The turmoil that's coming is on you, this board. God have mercy on your souls.
Okay, any other members of the public wishing to speak?
I feel like our country has been taken over, looking at what it used to be. Our schools aren't schools, they're indoctrination programs. There used to be an X-rated bookstore just down the street here, and same materials in these schools to once again prime our children for the business of pedophilia. It's the only reason three hundred and twenty-five children come across the southern border, and no one knows where they went. Where'd they go? And why were they allowed in here in the first place? And then I learned that there's like a thousand children coming in every day, and our government's paying two hundred and fifty million dollars to do this, to fund this project. Why do we bring in children without their parents? Is there a business called child trafficking? Does anybody see what I see when I look at the same reports coming out of Washington, DC? This would have happened four years ago, or sixteen, or twenty-four, or a hundred years ago. There's an appetite that can't be satiated with our current American children, and it's disgusting, and it's been brought on since this current administration, or should I say the overthrow of the United States government, which happened in 2020. Georgia has confirmed it was overthrown. The other swing states have duplicated the same results, and here we stand in a fallen nation we're laughed at by every other country in the world. Wars are going on that could lead to annihilation of our species, and no one will take action here in my state. That's what I care about, is what happens in my state at this level, the Lancaster County. I have a God-given fear for my Savior. And he, I tried to do what he wants me to do. I felt compelled to come down here this morning. Because if I did it, there might be some people that missed what I had to say. We have an election in one week. I've already voted. This is your time to cast your vote if you really think the last three and a half years are better than the years that Trump were in office. And if you really believe that it's better now than it was with Trump, you need your head examined. And you need to get on your knees, ask your Creator, whoever your God is, what have I become to allow my country to devolve to this level of animalism? The love of money is the root of all evil, always has been, always will. You can figure out any problem by looking at the trail of money. A lot of people will sell their souls. Well, I sold mine to the guy upstairs that took care, took his life so I could have one. So I don't have much else to say. I do have to share this flag because this is my feelings. It's, give me liberty or give me death. Because I don't want to live as a slave. I'm done, you know? I have to stand for the truth and I hope you do too. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good morning. Dwayne Rousher. The previous person that spoke talked about child trafficking and, not necessarily child traffic, it could be adult trafficking too. I mean, do we, what do we have going on in Lancaster County? We think that there's nothing going on because everything is okay. You know, I think there's a lot goes on behind the scenes. I mean, you can ask the police or the Sheriff's Department, where's the truth on this issue? Are we having this issue here in Lancaster County? I think it's a very good possibility, especially when we have a university here and we have the government for the State of Nebraska centralized here. A lot of things can happen, but yet the truth is not known. So I think that's something that really needs to be looked at. Also wanted to talk on the election coming up. We need information that shows what has gone on for this election, like the cast vote record and the things that need to show. Need to request that from your election division to get that information. We need information to know, is this election honest and is it truthful? And where does the truth lie? Have all of you had your hand count voter counting class on how to do a hand count? I think that's something we need to take a look at. If you haven't had it, please do so. Because there's things in there that I think would help understand how simple it is, the process. I think you should run the, run the votes through your machines, fine. But then afterwards, then actually do a hand count. Let's verify what information was there. It wouldn't take that long to go through and do a hand count on all the ballots. That way we know what's really going on. Is it truthful or not? Are we being manipulated? I think it'd be very interesting to find out, you know, what is the truth on this? That's one way to resolve the issue. Take a stand. Let's do a hand count. Do it right after the election. Get the necessary reports, documents, the type of information that went through those machines, like that cast vote record, and see what the truth really is. We need an honest election. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? No other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay. We'll go on down to announcements.
Item six, announcements. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four AM at room one-twelve of the City County Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners and the Board of Equalization will not hold meetings on Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh two four four one seven four four seven or commish@lancaster NE dot gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on L and K TV. L and K TV is available on L or Channel Two and Spectrum Channel thirteen hundred. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit Lincoln dot NE dot gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L and K TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Last item is adjournment.
Move we adjourn.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flourde?
Yes.
Motion carries.